City Commission Workshop Meeting of Tuesday, June the third, two thousand twenty-five, to order at six oh seven P. M. They would please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Mike Ferson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, just thank you for another opportunity to come before your presence, Father. I ask you to just...
Hopefully, you had an opportunity to go through some of the information from both the seating county clerks' measurements and also from International Seated Managers Association, some of the core principles that should be considered or that's usually considered in developing a tool for the seated manager. So with that, Mayor, unless there is any other particular specific questions, I don't know exactly where we left off on the managers' tool. The city clerk can be able to tell us?
And I can take a little lead from here.
Okay.
I will say we did go through the city manager evaluation pretty thoroughly. This is a tool that have been, it's coming online and they're all very much the same, even the city manager evaluation, so we don't have to reevaluation. So we don't have to rein a wheel, the wheel is all, then a wheel, the wheel is already there for us. We can fine tune it and oil it and do whatever alignment to it, whatever we need to do, but that part of it is there. I think our biggest challenge is, is coming up with some measurable, each come up with one goal which that at least a majority would even agree.
Many of which, like seeking funding, big V.
Okay. I've, 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 I've given, at least tried to share even some things on proper goal setting and those that would be measurable and would be equitable and fair to whoever is supposed to be meeting those particular dollars amount, but with a way of doing it, that's for example of a goal out there. But I have some goals in mind myself that I've gotten that they are standards goals that most, they should be measurable and they should be reasonable and able to be readily met.
And within his power to do too many things outside of his power that kind of hurts his ability to actually accomplish it.
Right.
Maybe with staff, it can be done if we had the proper staff hired, Mr. Bolden. I don't think we would set reasonable goals to set him up for failure. I mean, that's just my personal thought. I, you know, hope we wouldn't set goals that would set him up for failure, but I'm just thinking with staff, even if asking for funding and we know we need a grant writer, we've been asking about the position of a grant writer, and if nobody has been hired or no company or anybody has been hired, I don't think to set that as an unreasonable goal when he has the authority to hire to fill the positions. That's just my opinion.
So even that, that's not, of course, he can advertise, which he has, for a certain period of time, he's advertised that particular position. I don't know if we just want him to hire someone just to hire someone so that he can reach that goal. I think that's a bad practice. And like I said, when we talk about these goals, it's very important that we meet the criteria for something that he can actually accomplish. Hiring for a position, he's not going to just hire somebody just to hire them situation that we are, will be looking at on an annual basis. So I wouldn't be totally concerned with the goal setting, concerned with the goal setting. If we all fair and applicable and look at the goals and make sure they're reasonable and, and, and able to be accomplished with some effort and work, I, I think we'll be okay. But those cautions certainly need to be on the table and be aware of that we don't want to put any undue burden on anyone of knowing that this is not a realistic goal that can realistically be accomplished.
I have a question, Mayor Bab. I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking for my, um, the, the evaluation we was working from last time, and I guess I was working on it at home and I didn't bring it, but I don't see it with the corrections on here because there were some that we couldn't vote on it, but as a, you know, we thought that should be added. I don't see it on here because even Mr. Bolden had something in regards to technology. So I don't know if this the revised copy or not because I don't see any of that information on here.
This is a current evaluation with not the changes.
I know, but I thought we was working from, okay, I thought we was going to be looking at, working from the changes that we had so we can move forward from where we stopped at to move forward because now looking at this, I, me, I'm just saying for me, I would have to start from scratch because I, I thought I had it with me and I don't because it doesn't have the additional changes on here that we were talking about.
I don't know if the clerk brought in a hand of a recording of that.
I, I, I can share that with you, but normally, um, we don't, you don't make amendments and adjustments until it's voted on and it becomes the standard for, uh, from the commission's standpoint, but I can't...
So then we start from scratch then because...
No, I wouldn't suggest starting from scratch.
Because I'm a visual person. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, but I have to see. I, I'm a visual person.
Okay, if, if I can, I'll, I'll kind of share what was captured in the last, the last meeting.
I can't follow along like that.
Yeah, I think the best thing would have been for that to be attached with the documents that we have before us, but go ahead.
We, we have the, the changes online. If you, if you can go to the actual minute, minutes, and I can share that with you.
See, I thought that would be there in our packet.
Minutes from the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. And, and in providing the information, I know it was made clear that when we sent this other version that we referenced that you had already received a copy, and I was just under an impression that you would bring everything you needed to the meeting tonight.
On the top, since I've had time to think and we don't have the ones that we're working from, so I'm ready to start with some changes I have there since we don't have that.
We do have it. We do have it, and I'm, I'm going to share that with you. And you, you know, it's completely up to the commission to decide which direction they want to go after, but I think it's fair to share the information that ensued from the last meeting. The, was it consensus to add a new criteria category as innovation and technology with these two bullets, competence in integrating technology to improve city operations and success in implementing smart city initiatives. And there was a consensus to add the following characteristics to category three, relations with elected members of the governing body with these two bullets, effectively communicate with commissioners verbally and written, and ensure proper documents are enclosed to support agenda items. Also, there was consensus to update the last characteristic in category nine under fiscal management to read as follows, appropriately monitors and manages fiscal activities of the organization, examples, contracts, and audits. Also, to update the fourth characteristics in category six, which entitles citizen public service to remove adverbages follows. Instead of accept recommendations, it was changed to listen to or entertain thoughts and ideas from members of the community and strives to understand their interests as residents, provide an open door policy for this, for a discussion. Examples are town hall. Add a third narrative evaluation for the accomplishments of goals. Goals will be determined by the city commission at a future date. Okay, and by consensus of the city commission, the city manager will develop the city clerk evaluation tool using the same format as the city manager evaluation tool and relevant examples provided by the city commission. The item will be discussed further at a future workshop to reach a consensus on the tool. And again, that was agreed upon and discussed in February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
That last statement you just read?
Yes, sir.
With that done for this meeting, the evaluation for the city clerk?
Yes, the similar format.
As I said in the sample hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's attached to your...
Okay, great.
So I have a question. So under relations with elected members of the governing body, can, um, I just have a suggestion, I'm just asking, can we add some, um, like advises the council of relevant legislation and developments in the area of pub, of public policy affecting, that's affecting our city? Can we add something like that to the, to that effect?
My question to you would be in the other category that we currently have, and I know what you're saying, you're looking for some more specific, but do you see any area where that could be covered under? Because what we're doing, if we're going so far as to noting every specific thing we need in evaluation, I'm not sure.
But I think this is very broad, Bab. It's like you're asking us to say, okay, as you all go along the year, you got to be thinking about where this falls at. I'm looking at the job description as well in what we should, what his job description is, so I'm not just pulling something out of the air. And I just want to make sure that when we, when I'm evaluating him, I want to evaluate fairly and not, oh, I think it falls up under here. So since I think it falls there and then he has a low number and then try to explain why it, I, I think it falls there and you may think it falls somewhere else, whereas we are specific.
All I'm saying is, in these evaluation, I'm just saying overall, the city manager evaluation, there, I can see a half in maybe one or two areas where it just need that specific, but what we're looking like, we're attempting to do is make this evaluation so specific and just pertaining to the individual job and their responsibility. I'm just thinking of just going a little too broad.
Okay, so let me ask you, just, um, for understanding, is it possible we can see one of the last evaluations that the commission did on one of the previous city managers to give me an idea? I know this came off the internet, I get that. Can, I, can, can the commission see a copy of whoever, Lucas Chandler, who, Jazilon? So if we can bring, get a copy of one of those to see what is something that the commission already used to see if maybe something, maybe that may be a good one that they've used already versus looking at a new...
One that we have here is a one that's been used for the last ten or more years, if not longer. This, this haven't just came and been created off of the internet. This is the evaluation that Pohokee, the city of Pohokee uses for its city manager evaluation.
So we couldn't block...
All of them that have been evaluated use the same identical evaluation. And all I'm saying, everyone...
The same thing that's on here?
Same thing that's on there. All I'm saying, if you pull any information concerning the city manager evaluation offline, it would be a...
Don't talk about from the city of Pohokee, Mayor Bab.
I understand that, but I'm just saying it would be a similar evaluation tool.
So I was just trying to see what it is that you all used in the past to see that we're going through a new one.
Is that, no, this is not a new one. She, clerk, are you able to provide some formal evaluation of some of the city manager?
That was, that is housed in H. R., so I could request that and send that, but as you're saying...
And you can redact their names. I, I mean, the names are not important, I just wanted to...
No, I don't have it on file, so I would have to go to H. R. to get it, but I could send it to you once I get it. I don't need to worry about it. But this is the actual tool that you guys received, um, to do his, what was it, six months evaluation?
I know, but this had another city name on it. This didn't have city of Pohokee, that's the only thing I'm asking, I just wanted to see one from the city of Pohokee.
This one is the city's.
That's for clerk. Not, not even that, I gave another example of a city manager evaluation from another , uh, community, municipality, but we have our city manager evaluation that's...
This is the first one.
Evaluation we have is in here, that all the other city managers have been evaluated by this same identical tool. So we're not really creating anything new or changing anything. This is the evaluation tool we've always been able to been, been used.
Okay, so she'll make sure we get those copies, um, just to make sure.
Okay.
So you're saying, Mayor Bab, that you think that I'm, that we're catering it to, me, I don't know about anybody else, you think we're being too specific? So when is evaluation time? You're saying, when I get the evaluation, this is what I have to look at to evaluate? So I can't deviate from this because this is what's on this paper that we're saying that we're going to evaluate him on. So if nothing is on here in regards to that, you cannot evaluate someone on something that's not on this paper because this is what we will be voting on. Am I correct?
No.
Is that correct?
I'm saying most, if not all, these categories, anything that you may want to evaluate it on should be covered under one of these ten categories that they're being evaluated on.
And is that fair to him if I, like, let me just ask you a question. So what I just asked you about, where would you find that at? Where it says advises the council of relevant legislative and development?
I'm going to be honest, we did the same thing. I'm not saying we don't need to rehash it, but the last time we was here, we did the same thing. You wanted to know each category that you wanted to be, wanted him evaluated on, the city manager, I'm not talking about Mr. Jackson in particular, but any category you wanted him evaluated on, you wanted to see which category is on. You're going to have to, you can be able to find that if you look at each of the categories. I, I can't set up here at this quickly moment and find which category, but even I think Mr. Jackson kind of turned in on it at the last time. I believe that should be able to be covered on the this particular category. And then you got your narrative. So anything that's not on here verbatim, you can include it.
Yeah, we don't get a score for that.
Huh?
Remember, we talked, I do remember that, we don't get a score for that. I'm just asking because under individual characteristics, how do I strive to continue professional development? How do I give a grade for that strive, you striving to do that? How do I give, I mean, it doesn't, it's not like he, the city manager comes and report on professional development to us. That's not something that's on our agenda. So a lot of these questions, I'm just asking, how are we going to evaluate on a lot of this, on a lot of what I'm looking on here? I know where I looked at it before and I looked at it and I thought about it and I'm looking at some of this, um...
Mr. Jackson?
I just don't know how I'm going to be able to, I'm just saying to fairly evaluate.
Mr. Jackson, in your, in your time here, um, could you give me a ballpark figure of how many professional trainings you've attended?
It's not just, okay.
I'm just, he's striving to...
But we got to ask though, that's what I'm saying. It's not like we get a lot of this at, um, I'm going back through my agendas and when I'm starting to evaluate, that's a lot of what I'm going to be looking at, Mr. Bolden, what he has presented to us. This, a lot of this information, what he's doing in his job description should be, we should have to keep asking, did you do this? Did you do that? Did you do this? Did you do that?
You shouldn't.
We, we shouldn't have to be asking that. I should be able to, as I'm going along throughout the year, I should be able, be able to look at this and be taking notes as I'm going along to make sure that I am evaluating him fairly. That's the only thing that I'm saying, instead of just waiting till I'm in the feelings at that moment and completed at that moment, and then it's not a fair evaluation. I'm just trying to be fair about whoever is in that seat, um, in evaluating them versus saying, okay, it's time to do his evaluation and whatever my thoughts and feelings are right now, just what I'm grading them on.
I would simply go to him and, and ask him, ask him to provide the documentation for it. Have you been...
I just use that as an, I just use that as an example.
At least.
Like, how would I know if he encouraged head, department heads to make decisions within jurisdiction? How would I know that? Because we can't get involved with day-to-day operation. We don't get reports from the department head. So how would we be able to make those type of decisions and give a score for that? I'm just asking.
I think that comes from having a relationship.
Let me, let me make a suggestion to you, um, to the council. As a part of the documentation that I think it was the mayor that provided, um, it doesn't have an actual page number, but it suggests, it's entitled, what is the role of the council? Uh, they have four, four bullets there, four items there that will kind of help in my, in my mind, kind of help you develop.
I think he's talking about the package evaluating the city manager best practice management in that particular, uh, package.
And it kind of puts you in a posture, uh, so you can have a better appreciation of, of this evaluation tool. And I'll just read the first one. Be familiar with all charter provisions and council policies that define how authority is delegated to the manager and its proper use monitored. The manager's role and his or her authority and accountability, constraints on the manager's authority which establishes the practical, ethical, and legal boundaries within which all staff activity and decision-making will take place and be monitored, and what the council intends for the city to achieve. So tho, those are some measurable things if, um, if, if we, if you were to kind of follow and, and kind of develop, um, some thought around this, I, I really believe that this could probably help you in evaluating, um, either the manager's position or the clerk's position, uh, because it, it, it empowers you to have a, a better appreciation of what's expected. Uh, and, and as you indicated, a lot of the things that you may not know specifics on, but in, in your reference that you, you depend on what's on the agenda, and if, if you, if that's going to be a continuation of how you decide to, um, and that's just one part of it, I must, I, I might add, but if you use that as your, as your litmus, as your measuring stick, um, I would recommend and suggest that you look at the agenda items and you see those, see what's been accomplished on all of those agendas that you're looking at. Are you taking consideration the, 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 the dearth of, of, of work and projects that's being completed, um, the, the amount of funding that's coming to the city? Uh, those are all things that you can specifically measure, and, and if, uh, if those things have been completed, achieved successfully at a level that, that moves the city beyond completing four or five projects a year or completing a successful audit, those are some things that's measurable. Um, and those things just don't happen in a vacuum. It requires that a lot of pieces and a lot of pla, players are, are participating at a level to have that success in place. Um, and without being repetitious, the, the mayor recommend, suggested and pretty much insinuated that what you see in, in a manager's evaluation tool and likewise in a clerk's evaluation tool, um, it, it's going to be standard across the country. We have agencies and organizations that develop best practices, management skills, uh, expectations of the profession that's been doing this for a lot of ti, a lot of years and a long time, and you don't find many municipalities that, that, uh, that go away from those established practices and principles. Uh, now, you, you can have some things that are germane to Pohokee, but for the most part, the tools are in place to effectively manage, um, and effectively evaluate, uh, the manager's position and the clerk's position.
Now, Mayor Bab, I have a question. Since y'all doing, I'm looking at our evaluation, only way you've got attendance, how do I know, like, when the city manager or clerk is at work, and we're doing that?
That's something we may want to include in our policy that not only the mayor would be notified, but each commissioner would be at least notified if the city manager and the city clerk is out. Now, that's not currently there, but we can add that to our policy and our procedure and our manual if we want to as a whole.
Oh, I was thinking, I thought you posted like clerk to someone else in the office who's going to be...
Well, you have the H. R. person that, that information goes to, and normally, the, it, it reads that the manager and the clerk should notify, let's say the, the city clerk should notify either the manager or the mayor of their absence in the long with this city, uh, H. R. director. But we can, we can clear that and have it so that this entire commission would be aware when, when either or both of those are out.
I just think it's kind of odd to evaluate somebody on, on their attendance when you, and there's no way that I know when they're at work, when they're not at work, how many days they taking off with a secret vacation, or they just not coming in. I, I just kind of hope for me to sit up and say, well, okay.
Of course, of course, I have a calendar, Commissioner Scott.
I, I was saying like...
What, what are you suggesting?
Well, I think the calendar can be, like, either one of us can just go on there instead of, you know, someone called, like, I, I went to the, um, city hall and I tried to meet with the city manager, but he never in, he's not there, and it feel for me to like, okay, but no, he, he's, he's at a conference, he got to, you know, that's, that's, that's a simple, I know someone in office can do that, but sometimes they don't. So it's just when people calling you, uh, questioning you about where is your city manager at, and we never can get in touch with him, it's easy for me to look on the calendar and say, okay, he's, you know, y'all, he's the old...
Hmm? That's the regular staff, that's not for the, that's not for the manager.
Oh, yeah, I got a different one, okay. So there's a difference there on the old one. This one is...
It's, it's, it's the first, one of the first things that, that's in your packet. And there's a list of...
How much is ten?
Yeah.
There's a list of ten, ten, um, performance categories.
This is what, this is not what he showed you. I guess...
This look like this.
Yeah, I got that one, I got, I got, I just didn't know, I was just looking at, I was just looking at what he was showing you, that's why I got that one, because I didn't know which one y'all were you. What he was showing you, that's why I got that one, because I didn't know which one y'all were you.
And ten, I... Yeah, I stand corrected. He, he did read those off, and I think, uh, centrally, we agreed on those, so at some point, they would be added to the evaluation. I guess I got to the point where I didn't want us to overload on so much specific, but we did at our last meeting, at least came to that consensus that those should be added, and not saying that those are the only ones, but I just didn't intend to try to reinvent a wheel when the Georgia, what we're looking for came under those original ten, but we can be more specific to certain things that maybe is generic to Pohokee only, so I just didn't want to get it carried away.
Okay, because I, I had another one that I wanted, wanted to add, um, I don't know, maybe we can place it within some of those other ones, but to execute grants, uh, grant expenditures appropriately and timely, um, and what I mean by that is, is, uh, so we're going to be requesting extensions on, on grant, on grants. Now, sometime I know to extenuate them circumstances should cause that, but we shouldn't, that shouldn't be the norm. And what my suggestion is, yes.
Commissioner Ferson, that just... And where would that be, Father? A rule of procedure, I, I, I actually semi-interrupted Commissioner Kyle when she had one, she wanted to also consider that kind of...
Okay, well, I'll get that when we get to the...
Short, and I, I really want to apologize if I did, but at least that I get that, and then we'll...
That's fine, no problem, no problem.
Look at any others that the commission wants to be considered and add. Commissioner Kyle was...
I got kind of used to it, Mayor Bab. Um, so I guess you've pretty much cut me off and said that...
I'm going to save that, but if you're going to go ahead and...
I'm not, but I'm just, I'm not, what I'm saying to you is, is that you said we could just figure out where they go, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, I apologize for that and I'm trying to correct it, so if you, if that's your attitude, and you don't want to go any further, and you want to find it, that's fine. We're moving to Commissioner Mike Ferson, uh, Commissioner Mike Ferson.
No, I'm not, no.
I tried to, but she don't want to move forward because she, she stuck on my earlier comments, so if that's her attitude, then so be it.
No, but Mayor Bab, it, it states in the charter, it states in the charter how we're supposed to respect, each commissioner is supposed to be respected when they're speaking. That's the only thing that I'm saying, and I'm just saying, I've just noticed since being a commissioner, I've gotten up here how that has been the disrespect that I've gotten, that's the only thing that I'm saying.
So you've been getting disrespect from me, that's what you're saying? Commissioner Mike Ferson, if you want to... Commissioner Mike Fearsen, if you want to, you can include whatever you wanna say, I'm not gonna wait on someone who refused to move forward on the end of their original comment.
Well, one of the um, things that I wanna implement is executing grant expenditures appropriately and timely. Uh, my suggestion be within the first year, have um, all necessary inspections if needed and secure. And procure the, and the procurement procurement process done within within a year as far as putting it out for bids and that type of thing. And within that second year, have the grant, um, we can start trying to work on the grants. And I know sometime they may be extenuating circumstances, but that should be our primary thing, so we don't be requesting um, extensions for grants and 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 those type of things and 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 be in a situation where we losing grants because they wasn't executed in a timely manner.
Well, you suggest to put that under category ten, would you look to see?
That last one is pretty close to what he said.
Yeah.
What last one are you talking about?
Under.
On the category ten.
It says increase city's ability to leverage funding from with other regional state and federal. That doesn't have anything to um, leverage funding, I'm talking about once we receive secure from funding as far as making sure that the funding uh, utilized and first and appropriate, make sure that they're spent on what they were supposed to be spent on and and the time that matters, so we're not requesting uh.
So would that go into?
Would that go into nine, appropriately monitors and manages fiscal activities of an organization? Will that fit there?
Yes.
Or if you wanna recommend adding?
Well, we can add that under uh, provide open door policy, maintain a nonpartisan approach in dealing with the.
Is that under?
Would that go into nine? Also, makes the best possible use of available funds, conscious of the need to.
Yes, we can put that one under nine.
Efficiently and effectively. I'm gonna add his language to that, then.
And one other suggestion is um, provide annual training to subordinate staff to ensure that they, you know, be able to 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 promote efficiency and more prof- professionalism as far as keeping them up to date as to what's going on with the um, city policies and stuff.
Seven.
Change, I like the word provide better. I like the word provide better. And that doesn't mean he have to do it, agents is, agents is that could.
That's what promoting.
Yes.
Making sure that he's gonna have to assess them and make sure that they have adequate training for respective positions.
I could ask you a question.
What'd you say, Mr. Bond?
No, I said he's gonna have to.
Trying to understand what you were saying, Mr. Bond.
Each employee is evaluated and a part of their evaluation training is a component of that.
I have a question about the um, personnel and staff. Um, when you, like, I know you s- you always state that it's hard to find competent people to work, I mean, to hire. Isn't it like, I don't know, cause sometime I think, one time or another, every one of us in here was the first time we're doing something. And I guess when I look at hiring people, I I have pe- I I have people for different reasons. And I don't know what is that you're looking for, for is hiring someone else to do some of these jobs, but to be honest with you, I find it kinda hard to set up here and say that n- nobody is capable doing the job. That 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 just, that just honestly, uh, and I only can be honest with you, that don't sit well with me at all. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me, you know, cause sometime they may not.
All of the positions since, since advertised, we look at qualifications and criteria as it relates to that particular job or that function. So we have a job description, we have some general descriptions and we have some skill sets that's listed there. And it comes listed there. And it comes to a point through H R and the interviewing committee and looking at, I think, personal vision. Personal vision.
I understand that.
Okay, so that's.
I didn't say just hire anybody, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying, if they in the ballpark, you know, maybe they don't have five years' experience, maybe they never been in a leadership role, but they're they're there, you know, they they, it ain't quite, but I could count it, and we had, we had a term where they'll hire you, but you ain't officially a county employee till after so many months. Alright, so that means, right.
And over over the, over this year, we've we've hired people, just give an example of what I'm talking about. We've hired people in in several different positions within the city. And we hired them based on what you're just saying, they meet general criteria, so we're gonna give them an opportunity, we'll tier you. So we're gonna give them an opportunity, we'll train them, we'll invest in them, in knowing that to some degree. And because I I really be- because I I really believe in in hiring as much as you can, people that resides in Pahokee. And just this past two month, and just this past two months, I'll just use this past two months, where we've, where we've done that, we've had almost an eighty percent rate of those people that we hired and gave an opportunity to to leave the job. Some uh, the professional level positions that we're we've having, we're having challenges with, we've having, we're having challenges with. I really, really, really don't support just hiring people to put them in that, in those positions because they're from Pahokee or they have a ballpark understanding on what those positions are. I honestly believe that that has been the practice in the past and that has been part of the reason why a lot of things have gone undone, because you can't afford to have people in positions that are not functioning and are are not operating to a level that's, they're gonna hold their own weight. The individual employee to have to hold a weight, a carried weight.
Position, who does the work?
In most cases, it's it's spread among the existing staff, depending on the position, a lot of.
You just said it wasn't fair.
It's not fair, but it's the reality, the job has to be done.
Well, my my suggestion too, even, you know, and it may be in the same lines that he was saying, but sometime we may have to, that's why we have professional development and being able to put people in 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 training, I mean, we should be able to look at a resume and and of course you may, some positions may require a degree, but they may not have the experience, but I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just hearing both, both sides of the con for staff, so that's why I say we got to find.
The part of just, again, without repeating myself, it it becomes difficult. Some of the, some of these positions, you can't, can't be on the job training. You can't have a on the job training person that's leading your community economic development department. That person has to be able to hit the ground running. Uh, you can't have a a on the job training person that's um, finance director. Those, you you just can't, you have to have some level of qualifications and experience to be successful in those jobs. Now, what you do when you don't put people in those positions and you you set yourself up for failure. And then we're here talking tonight on evaluation tools. Um, just say I, we just hire people to put them in positions, hire people to put them in positions. How how would that look on my evaluation when the results are not what you're suggesting that they should be?
Well, he- here's my thing, first of all, I don't wanna go right to, I don't believe in just firing people. I've been in a management position, but the thing is, when you see a a staff that have a deficiency, before I would go to that level, I would back up, did I provide this person all the necessary tools for them to be successful? Did I provide them the necessary training for them to be successful? If I can't answer you.
Assess them, can you just explain, how would you do that one?
I I think it it, you know, pretty much speaks for itself, we said at least annually, we have in most departments three different evaluations, if you're coming on new, you're gonna do a, have one at prob- probationary period, you have one at six months and you have one at at your annual. So all of those are opportunities to make those assessments. And in in each one, they're measured based on where they are. And if they're not progressing to the point where they'll be successful in those positions, training is already in place, but if there's a need to do specific training for a specific area based on the job, then we make that available as well, just as um, Commissioner McPherson uh, kinda alluded to a minute ago. We're not just going to uh, evaluate a person and see deficiencies and not do something about it. We wanna make sure that all employees are successful. I realize that there's, our our general success is based on each individual's person, personal success.
And so the three evaluations is just for new staff?
No.
Is that for everybody?
Well, you wanna get a probationary period if you're not.
You said at least annually, I know probation is for the new people. So I'm talking about if people that's been here for a while, they're just get at least annual, get at least annual.
At least annual.
And so, and then you set goals with them, but you're gonna periodically check on how they doing with the goals.
Absolutely.
And I was just asking, what is periodically, to you, I was just asking. So that when I'm, you know, looking at this, I'm just wanna make sure we on the same page. To you, what is periodic, what should we, if we say, hey, if um, can you bring in and show us um, some goals that you've set with some, we wouldn't be able, this, I'm just saying, I would, we wouldn't be able to see this, we wouldn't be able, this, I'm just saying, I would, we wouldn't be able to see this because we don't work, because we don't work with, this is supervision for you with staff to observe. We don't get to see their evaluations, we don't get to know when you meet with them or if you meet with them. We don't get to know that, I don't get to know that. So how would we be able to get, I'm just asking, how would I be able to give you a score on this? On number eight supervision in general, how would I be able to give you a score on it?
I just gave you an example on how you do that. I gave you an example, I told you the number of uh, evaluations that's done. I told you that if training is needed and necessary, we put those staff in the training situations. Now, if you're asking me if me if I should um, if you should have more weight in how that's done, then that's that's, I would, I would kinda suggest that you didn't do that because that's, again, is your reference.
Saying, because I gotta basically go by what you tell me, cause I don't have anything to see, right? So I would have to go by pretty much if, put what you tell me, go by pretty much if, put what you tell me, yeah, I did it with the staff, but I mean, I, you see what I'm saying?
Just if you needed to, you would have a list from H R that shows that each individual employee had at least an annual evaluation. That's for all employees.
Right.
So there's ways that you can measure that.
Okay.
Um, so that's one way you would.
Have that paperwork with us to be able to.
If you so desire, yes.
No, not if we desire, but if we're going to evaluate, it's not if we desire, it should be with the paperwork, am I right, operations? We would have to, some- something would have to be provided to us. Cause how do we measure developing maintains a friendly and informal relationship with staff? How would we measure that? How would we know that? We're not up here every day.
Let let me suggest something to you, um, Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor and the Commission, this is a, I really.
Stuff here that, like you say, you can't fairly evaluate them on some of this stuff. So I would, we shouldn't even use that, that we can't be finalized.
I honestly think a lot of this stuff, um, I don't think. I don't know, I'm I'm in and out a lot, so I hear interactions as I pass through. That's why this is not really difficult for me, I think a lot of this starts with a relationship with city manager, where you uh, you know. Of course, that, we we should all have one, we should do our one on ones, we should.
That's not a requirement, it's suggested.
We should.
As we, as we noted, this is this city commission evaluation tool currently. If the Georgia wanna change anything on here, you can do that. But all I will say that what we're doing or what we're attempting to do, re-invent the wheel, and we're doing something that maybe only two or three percent of the cities in the United States does. This is a standard evaluation tool and evaluating the city manager. So every city commissioner in the state of Florida not using identical tool, but very similar to this here. So we're 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 re-invent the wheel, we're making a wheel, so we can do that, if we wanna take the time to go through it, you have that option.
And as the clerk just pointed out to me, under your instructions, on page two of seven, it it clearly states, if you do not have enough information to rate the city manager on a particular characteristic, leave it blank. Blanks will not be included in the scoring, but the number of blanks for that characteristic will, okay.
Do we need to have annual in there?
Yeah, this is an annual tool, so it'll be done.
No, he's saying for staff, he's saying promote annual training development opportunities to staff.
Your staff, the staff's evaluations are done annually, so that's.
Oh, I was just saying, he said annual.
I mean, you can put it, you can put it there, but it's al- it's already captured in in understanding on what, annual, training?
Yeah.
Okay. And for number ten, can we, can we get clarification on that so we, we're all on the same page? I think you suggested something else, uh, when you were talking about grants. Did you, did you agree that it was already here, or you wanna add it's five years, five years? But when you put the language in.
Maybe I need to uh, come back with a a a time charts on the different, on the different grants, but I don't know if I wanna get that specific. That's why, because I know you can't wait to to year two if the grants are only a year.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting is that not, that you not put a time, because if it's gonna be something that's gonna, because I don't think we developed a evaluation tool based on each grant, I think it should be something that general, uh, that we should be able to apply to all grants. And and again, I think after we talked to number ten, we looked under number on on under nine that basically captured what you were saying under number two, makes the best possible use of available funds, conscious of the need to operate the local government efficiency and effectively, efficiently and ineffectively.
Mr. Jackson, do we have a um, policy in place, I know all grants are, you know, executed differently, but do we have a policy in place um, once we receive a grant, the next steps? Do we have a policy in place, what actually takes place with the grants? Maybe that's.
The contract does, the contract dictates that.
So can it be something like execute grants based on, execute grants based on their contract? In a timely manner? Maybe something like that, cause I know all grants are different, but um, I guess I'm just, processes that we have, we didn't follow it, the reason that we lost grants. So I guess, do we have a policy or process in place that we use for when we do get a grant?
Yes, we do. We do. And yes, we do.
I guess, I don't know, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to help figure out, you know, he's saying something about grants, and I guess that's what in my head is just trying to help think, is it?
Clarify the language, I gotta.
Like the process, do we have a process so that we don't lose the grants that we're following?
Yes, you have a, you have a con- you have a contract, you have a contract.
The grants that we're getting, I guess.
You have a contract that's uh, that uh, contractually obligated you and the grantor of their responsibilities. So the answer is yes. I think we kinda kinda stayed clear of of being too specific in 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 developing an evaluation tool. I'll, I'll just leave it, leave it at that, because what you begin to evaluate is something that's a little bit different than developing policy. It becomes, uh, operating and, and kind of dictating what goes on in, in, in the administration, which is completely separate of what, what, what you should be doing as a commissioner.
Most grants come in, they do have, already have a, a timeline, as you said, some grants may be a year, some may be two years, and, and, and that kinda stuff. That, that timeline is already outlined, correct?
Correct. And when the commission approves that grant, you're saying that you agree to that timeline. And, uh, that timeline, those timelines should be adhered to. But let me go a little step further. The contract also allows for things that you've, we've experienced when there's a need to extend or get a time extension, or change orders. They're part of, of, of all grants, if not all, most grants, if not all grants. Because both, uh, the city and also the grantor realizes that things happen that may not prevent you to complete successfully at the agreed-upon time. So those things are built into contracts and allow for that.
I would consider those as those extenuating things, as means that you didn't foresee that you may run, you may dig, digging a road and you changing some pipes, and when you got under there, you feel, realized, instead of changing one pipe, you had to change five. That's, I can understand that those are extenuating circumstances. But as long as the appropriate documentation is, um.
Yes.
Is there?
And regardless of who the city manager is, the Attorney General echoed my sentiments in citing that turnover has been of, of, of issue as well. As it pertains to COVID and our management, things like this.
Okay, so under the manager evaluation, are there any other suggestion that anyone suggested be added or included?
Oh, I just, let me see. We didn't have anything for job performance. Okay, I just had one more question, last one. For, um, do we have anything like for promoting under, like demonstrates leadership and vision in promoting economic development? Or does that get to be day-to-day too, up under? Does anyone know which one that would fall upon the promoting economic development? Or is that inappropriate to put on here?
This may be off, off subject, off subject, but it may be, i-if we can encourage our citizens, cuz I believe there is a economic development board that's on our, um, thing, but we don't, we're, right now, we're not taking advantage of all of that stuff.
So do we?
That would, uh, helping, but that, I mean, that's besides what you're saying, I'm not trying to answer your question.
I mean, they help with projects that's going on or.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly, and I think we need, we need that help. Es- especially promoting our community and economic development as far as even just the camaraderie and certain events and stuff that could be going on in the city.
So would that go, do we have anywhere where that could go?
But, I mean, I'm not trying to answer, Commissioner Carr, I just wanted to make that be noted. Some things that we have to promote and utilize and get our citizens involved.
We're, we're considering the in addition of comments or suggesting need to be added. Her comment was on economic development, do we have anything?
Promoting economic development and redevelopment.
Yes, I see, I was trying to answer your question, yeah.
We'll know whether or not to try to add something that the manager could possibly evaluate on a, yes, essentially.
Okay, under number ten, create, uh, I think it's number three, create partnerships with public county for increased support in local community development. Securing funds from the county, create inter-local, inter-local little agreements.
Number ten, started at number three.
Which one, number ten?
Yes.
Yeah, ten, number three, the third one down.
And the last one would be number six, I believe, he read two, I believe.
I read three, and then the next, the one just below it.
Okay.
Successfully address future priorities and develop adequate plans to address infrastructure and capital improvement plans. All of those are related to economic development. And, and a big part of what I would suggest, um, is that the, the commission becomes the, the lead in doing that. In promoting economic development, or discussing initiatives to create and promote pu, uh, economic development. That's a lot of what, um, falls under your purview as, as it relates to being an elected official.
So can we add then, where it says create partnerships with Palm Beach County, can we add other, not just Palm Beach County, but, I mean, for redevelopment, we, we wouldn't just be Palm Beach County, it would be with other agencies, or other businesses, or other corporations as well?
And local community.
Right?
Uh, as well as the local community.
Right, not just Palm Beach County, like, we want the partnership with other people. I know it says with Palm Beach County, and funds from Palm Beach County, and create inter-local agreements, but like for redevelopment, would that be under, I don't think redevelopment would be inter-local agreements, inter-local agreements would be people with businesses already, right?
No, uh, when you creating inter-local agreements, you're creating agreements that you work across the board, interlocually with other agencies and organizations, so it's not tied to an actual act, it's tied to a partnership and a relationship. Just say, for instance, if we develop a, inter-local agreement with, um, South Florida Water Management District, I'm just giving that as an example, and they've been able to help in the past and currently with, uh, algae concerns with, uh, the lake. That's an example of an, an inter-local agreement.
I'm talking about redevelopment, our city, economic development and redevelopment. So I'm just wanting to know, are we just gonna put it to Palm Beach County, what about like, other people who wanna come in and help redevelop our city? So are we gonna just wanna create partnerships with just Palm Beach County?
No, and we don't, we don't, but if you wanna change that, what, what would, what would you suggest?
I just wanna add Palm Beach County and other entities, not just Palm Beach County, I guess, I would like to see other entities added as well.
Okay.
Are there any other suggestions?
And so then, so, development growth and re, development growth and redevelopment of the city, in this, within the city. And then securing funds from Palm Beach, that can still stay there, it can be, um.
So put the word includes of agencies or other comments you wanted in there. For, for.
Just use the word include.
We're gonna take that out, we're gonna support, we're gonna support increased, um, support to local community. If we adding the other people, it's gonna create partnerships with Palm Beach County and other entities to promote economic development and redevelopment of the city. That's the end of that. Then the new one, next could stay the same, secure funds from Palm Beach County. That, Palm Beach there, that could stay the same.
So that would be a completely separate.
And create inter-local gr, uh, we can secure funds from Palm Beach County, I mean, however you wanna add it there, secure, but.
No, I wanna, I wanna add it like you, like you suggest.
So create partnerships with Palm Beach County and other entities.
Could we, could we kinda clear that up, instead of just saying other entity?
Help and redevelop our city, help and redevelop our city.
Well, you have a process for that, Commissioner. We have a process throughout, uh, we have a process throughout, uh, building, zoning, et cetera, community economic development for that, building, zoning, et cetera, community economic development for that. I don't think that becomes a, a measuring, uh, idea for, for evaluation tool. Cuz we, we already have that.
Okay.
You're not talking about the one that say town clerk performance evaluation?
Yes.
No, that's the one I, I, uh, submitted. This is not, uh, current, you did this?
No. No, this is, this is closely in line with what you just developed, or redefined here. The evaluation tool, if I'm not mistaken, clerk, you've utilized this.
I have, can I pass out some copies I found of different clerk evaluations as well, just maybe some of the language we may wanna take from it, from, um, some of the ones I found two online, that I made copies, um, that everybody may wanna look at, I mean, just.
Yeah, with the general.
Just some.
Yes.
But I'm talking about this one here, I just wanna make sure that the commission, whether or not it has any bearings, to know that that's the one I submitted to the clerk for consideration of developing a tool.
Yeah, we submitted two.
No, I, I emailed that to her afterwards. I submitted one, I don't know.
We submitted some in the commission meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one too, but I didn't.
This, to answer your question, no, this is, this is what you sent.
Okay.
This is what has been used.
Right, the general, I'm aware of that, right.
So we wanna develop something that's a little bit different from the general.
Right, correct.
Right.
Right.
So you're saying, Mayor Bab, that you submitted one?
Yeah, I submitted the one you see in the package here, I just wanna make sure.
You mean this, where it says town clerk?
Correct.
And so this is just one that I found, I found two, that, that's, um, town on the same page as Mr. Jackson's, and that was one of the first one that I found, not the thing we have to use, but at least some of, maybe some of the language that's in there. And then I'll pass it down, a copy of the second one, here you go, Mr. Bogan, that I, that I did find online as well. It's kinda similar to me, it's the whole thing, it's the whole one. So how many is that, two, you need four?
You have any more of what you just sent, passed down?
Uh, the first one or the second?
Yeah, first one.
The first one, yes.
Actually both, cuz I haven't seen the second one.
That's the first one, Mr. Jackson, then get, did the clerk get it, cuz I think I tried to make enough, but the clerk is well, that's the second one.
The first one, she didn't.
That's, I mean, we can look on there and see if it's some language and compare it to the one that Mayor Bab has as well, when we go through, try to count it the same.
I have one, but I don't have enough copies for everybody, so, but I can just read them off if it get down to it.
Him and the copy he had.
I, I didn't print for one, yeah.
Okay.
Did I give you one?
But I could probably share this, I can take, I can take myself a picture, somebody can have this one.
All right, the one I submitted has twelve category for the city clerk.
Okay.
And we can just take a look at each one and decide whether it's okay or need a little more information on the, the, uh, say, where it got town support, it would be, uh, city commission support. That's the first category. Do we see anything need to be added to that, or even that Tyler to you could be changed there? If you need to have a more specific, uh, Tyler, other than, uh, council support.
Where it says the clerk treats the mayor and each council member in a fair and impartial manner, can it just be that the clerk treats all council members in a fair and impartial manner?
And we're gonna use the word commission since we, yeah, just be consistent with what we are, some councils, some commissions, okay?
Yeah, I think that kinda goes along with this one, I have, I say interact with mayor and commission, is professional courteous and efficient.
Um, one, two, three, four, five, where it says, the clerk provides information to members, it should be members of, which may be of interest to them, I'm not quite sure what that means, or what would that look like?
Yeah, I believe that's saying that if you had some information you needed, and it was some interest to you that the clerk through her office, if you asked, would be able to at least research it or at least provide it to you if, if possible. But if the language ain't that clear, we can always take that out or add something in its place.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, so that means, because I don't, we, the commission, cuz I did read the job description, so that means if we do want the clerk to do something, the clerk, we can talk with her and that's not interfering with day-to-day operation. Is that what you're saying that this mean?
That's how I would interpret it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, even what you did earlier, as far as, uh, although it came from the commission voted on it as a whole, but the, uh, acknowledging the students, I think the clerk had to do a lot of lead work in helping that get done. So that's something you was interested in, she helped make sure it was provided as much as her role could, uh, call for.
Okay, just wanna make sure that that's true. But it's something that has to be, um, my question is, is it something that has to be voted on by the coun, by the commission?
What is, what is the ordinance president saying?
Cuz it says that the clerk works for the commission.
The commission.
The clerk works for the commission, so when we ask something, it doesn't have to be anything that comes before the commission. That's why I wanna make sure that the language on here is clear, that's the only reason that I'm asking, cuz I know the charter does say that she works for the commission. Well, the city manager and the, um, but it specifically says that, I guess, things that we need, the commission.
Just, just for clarity, um, and just for my understanding of it, because it could be, and maybe the, the city attorney can chime in on this, when, when it states works for the commission, the commission is a, is a, the whole body, the body of commissioners, the mayor and the commissioners.
Right.
So, and my interpretation of it is that, that work comes in this setting. It does not come in the day-to-day operation setting, it becomes a part of the commission as a whole. So she works at the pleasure of the commission, and not at the pleasure of a commissioner or.
But generally speaking, I can tell you what these provisions generally mean. Uh, but generally speaking, I can tell you what these provisions generally mean, is that, um, the commission, you know, gives that in the charter, or the order, and the charter, or the order, is that you can have some type of a schedule to meet some of those duties. But generally speaking, it's not, you're not, just like you can't really give the manager orders, you can't really give the clerk orders without it being through, um, the commission body.
Okay.
So hopefully that answers.
So we'll scratch that then, Mayor Bab. So we'll scratch that.
Which one was that?
One, two, three, four, the fifth one?
The fifth. Clerk provide information to members of the town. Can't be the fifth. They're saying the town clerk provide information to members of the town council, which may be of interest to them, so.
I guess if voted on, maybe we can put that, add that to it then. When voted on, when voted upon, since it can't be come from us individually, so when voted upon.
Okay.
Clerk provides information to members of the commission, which may be of interest to them when voted upon.
Well, I'm just reading under the um charter, it says supervision, the clerk shall. Serve under the direct supervision of the city commission, and both the city manager and the city commission shall evaluate the clerk.
We're saying the same thing.
I guess I'm reading that directly from the charter.
So it says she, let me see.
On the two point six three. Look on the two point six three and go down to.
Two point one?
Uh.
Powers and duties?
Number nine. Um, six point, two point six three. Two dash six three, I'm sorry, powers and duties.
Oh, it says the direct supervision of the city commission, and both the city manager and the commission will evaluate her. So what that mean when it says direct supervision attorney? That mean her?
She's on the phone, so you probably have to speak up so she can hear.
Your attorney?
Mrs. Weeks? You may have to unmute yourself. Mrs. Weeks?
It still speaks to the commission as a body.
Hmm.
It speaks to the commission as a body and not as individuals.
That is the supervision, that is the supervision of the commission, so it's not, she's not someone who you would be, you know.
Personal.
As an individual commissioner saying, I want this done and that done, and this has to be done now or anything like that. But as a body, if you all decide, even if you did it every, you know, every other meeting or whatever, you could still do that, but it just has to be something that you all vote upon. Vote as a commission body to do. Vote as a commission body to do.
Okay.
You can't do it individually.
Alright, thank you. Can we add Mayor Bab's resolution for that?
Yeah, that was done before you got here too.
Oh, we, we discussed that, and um, the city manager explained to the commission what he needed. Um, he explained to the commission that right after a commission meeting, he has to prepare for the next commission meeting. He talked about some of the time constraints and difficulties he had, and I even asked for, was that one meeting? To, to provide all the backup and everything we need, and we voted it down, so.
But that resolution is still in place though, we haven't gotten away from the resolution, so.
We're constantly putting him in a position where it's difficult for him to.
Resolution is not a policy.
Well, it's been voted on by the commission, so let me just say that, it has been voted on by the commission. So, I mean, it's, I'm just saying, no specific person, but I'm just saying because it's there.
Mm-hmm.
That's my question again that I'm asking, so we making sure that, you know, when we evaluating, we evaluating fairly. Based on all of our resolution and the policies and things that we have in place, that's the only reason I'm making the recommendation. Because there's a resolution for it. And I understand what you're saying too, Mr. Bowden, it was voted down, so apparent, the state, the state statute just says in a timely manner, but.
Absolutely.
But doesn't commissioners, they can make resolution, make resolutions.
Absolutely.
For their city, can't they, and I think that's what the city, I think that's.
Absolutely.
For their city, can't they, and I think that's what the city, I think that's what the commission did.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the state statute, I've read it, it says in a timely manner, they don't put a specific date, it says in a timely manner, just like it says. Minutes should be done in a timely manner, so what do they consider a timely manner, three, four months?
Yeah.
So, so what do they consider a timely manner, they don't give a, the commission was just specific?
Yeah. Commission majority and that time, that's what they wanted done, I'm not saying that. It can't be adjusted or changed by the current commissioner, but during the time, that's what they require, whether. Whether it was accomplished or not, it was voted upon to have it that way, but this commission, if we so choose, could. Uh, adjust that reference.
Wanna, we, we wanna be, I heard this term used quite a bit, fair second agenda for the, for the uh month.
So putting the city clerk provides all required materials to the commission for their meeting in a timely manner, you think it's not a fair item to put on here?
Absolutely, absolutely, that is, but what I'm suggesting is that. Five days in advance of a meeting, I don't think that's reasonable.
What is five days, meetings on Tuesdays, what is technically what is five days?
It just says five days, so that mean it doesn't say five workdays, so five days would mean if we have a meeting on that Tuesday, we have to get it that Wednesday. Of the, that Wednesday before the meeting. Cause that meeting would be the Tuesday of the next week, but if it's five workdays then. But I'm just talking about if that includes the weekend, that would be that third, we got to get it that Wednesday, count that's that Thursday. You know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, that's counting the weekend, but it just says five days, it doesn't say five workday.
Um, after commission meeting, three days for the next commission agenda, that's not real.
But when we get staff, will it be realistic, when we get this, whenever we get staff hired?
It should be, um, and, um, and you said you were looking at, to do for you real quick. The city clerks, you have the following duties and powers, seal custody to have the city's seal, which incorporates a lot of things. That she's responsible, responsible for with the city's seal.
What are they, can you name some, I just wanna make sure I know.
Finish, let me finish, attendance of commission meetings, minutes, that's just one. Ordinances, attesting, filing and indexing. I'm just giving you the general.
Mm-hmm.
Notices, giving.
Mm-hmm.
Recommendations as to the operations of office. Clerical assistance, administer oath and issue subpoenas. Appointment of deputy clerks, supervision.
Oath swash, yeah.
Supervisor of elections, perform all other duties described.
Right.
I would tell you, that's, that's a great amount of responsibility. And the fact that we're. Being suggested that we turn around a commission agenda in a two to three day period and. To go along with all of these other duties and responsibilities. It's, it's not.
But we don't.
It's, it's not reasonable.
Right, maybe you think that it's diminished, but it's a lot of work producing a product to you guys. Filing, we're behind, it's a lot, so.
Make sure you stay within, you know, what we agreed to as the five days.
But, if you're bad as for the evaluation, are you comfortable with that?
But we only talking about.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I guess I just wanna speak up just from my standpoint.
But, I, I'm, I don't know.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, put you on the spot, but I need to go back to you and just see if your consensus is staying, or you wanna. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, are we going forward with adding that as an evaluation point? You got a lot of areas we evaluating, the clerk can, would that be one of them?
Yes.
The timeframe of that. And you, Mrs. Scott?
No.
Okay, Bowden, uh, and I'll say in the round, right, will be added out.
I'm just asking.
Just not, put it on a, just not, put it on a valu- evaluation, I put it at, as it's staying. Evaluation, I put it at, as it's staying. And there's nothing wrong with asking for it, if that's what you want and need, you want her to be evaluated on it, but I'm just saying that, remember we're saying. Everything we do is for the evaluation, we wanna at least generate some type of consensus to add it for the evaluation. Again, this is pretty standard uh evaluation for a city clerk, what we may be also looking at, if there's any additional. Areas we wanna possibly recommend being evaluated outside of what's asked on this document. We can bring that up if, if needed.
Maybe a good idea, if you're gonna do that, if uh. Kinda operate on the uh parameters of her duties and powers. As illustrated in, in the ordinance, that kinda circle, I read them a minute ago, but.
Right.
And this is charter.
Yeah, and that way we, we're, we're keeping with the charter.
Right.
And most of them are captured.
Yes. In this clock, you do have some say-so as far as what we're looking at, if you see something on there seem be total unfair to be. Evaluated on, but this is a standard city clerk type of uh performance evaluation, so I don't know if there's gonna be. Anything that's outside of what she normally would do, wanna, like to say, if we wanna include something specific. Like we did with the city manager, that's an option also to consider.
On the public records, the last one, she provides training to staff.
Yes, yes.
She, to, to, to regular staff?
If they needed, uh, show them the process.
And as she mentioned a minute ago, there's, there's, there's pre-agenda. Um, functions and there are also post-agenda uh functions. Say for instance, after commission meeting, if there's a um, a contract. Agreed upon or passed, and she, her functions post uh, um, agenda, post-commission meeting. All parties associated with that contract, she has to make sure all um, signatures are in place for all parties. I know sometimes you see she stays after and the mayor signs or assign, but that's just one part of it. Whoever the contract is with, we have to make sure all of those representatives sign the contract, and oftentimes, that's not easy. We have to, in many instances, almost demand that they come in and, and execute, because we can't take copies, we have to have a reparties. Whatever that contract, how that contract impacts any area or any department of the city. Then there's coordination between her office and that particular department to ensure that those functions are carried out. Most times, that's done through community and economic development, but there may be a project that's specific to building uh multiple. And then there's coordination between the city manager's uh office as, as the uh. Pretty much the, the executive of that process. So we talked a little bit before about her duties and responsibilities and functions, but they are multi-layered. And a lot of times, it's not as visible when, when you just see. General uh descriptions on what she does, but she plays a major role in, in the overall functions of the city.
But, excuse me, I appreciate that, but I like the human's clock explaining this. And what she does, I mean, I, I mean, I, I mean, you do a good job, but. Coming from her, I think I'd take it a little differently, cause she knows what she do every day, and that's what I think the mayor was asking you. Whatever on here, that, you know, that you agree or disagree with, just say it.
Yes, that's why I voiced that, I just wanna apologize, because sometimes. As staff, we kinda feel unappreciated.
Mm-hmm.
And then sometimes we feel like what we do is not noticed, and we do a lot. And it could be disheartening when we're dealing with this, so I would sit back and be quiet and just try to do my job. And so I appreciate the manager and appreciate you guys as well, so I do wanna apologize because it was a bit upsetting earlier, just to kinda.
Personal traits, I like the individual characteristics of them, other than that, under here it just says fair and impartial, detail oriented.
Which one you want, Mr. Bowden?
Looking at uh twelve over here.
I was saying, which one of the evaluations you're looking at?
The number six.
The C, oh, okay. What did you want?
Her performance categories on her under number one.
Right.
Here, this is fair and impartial, um, detail and oriented, I wanna see diligent and thorough. In the discharges and do their self-starter, things like that, I think it's a bit more worthy, and just dedicated.
Okay.
What you wanna put there, support being number one, can we make that number one, just move, shift the numbers down? Support being number one, can we make that number one, just move, shift the numbers down? And then number twelve now would be. Um, professional skills. Like shift, instead of town and council being number one, we can make individual characteristics number one, then number two will be town council support.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying, since we deleting that number twelve that's on there, and then just shift everything down and make that number one?
So number twelve would be number one?
No, number twelve is gone.
Number twelve is gone, okay.
Oh, I thought he replaced it with the one from two or six.
Yeah, number twelve is still.
Number twelve would not become professional skills, cause you're gonna shift everything. Cause you're gonna scratch out number twelve that says professional traits, you're gonna scratch that off.
It wouldn't be just.
No, cause we gonna insert number one to be the character, the, the um, traits. And then number two gonna be town council support.
So what's, what's the title you looking for for number one, as it stands, it's individual characteristics, would you recommend changing that?
No, that'll be number one, we'll add it to the one that Mayor Bab gave us, that'll be our number one.
Okay.
Any other changes on here we wanna try to make?
Um, did we put anything, or do we need to put anything, I'm looking at number three on this one, this one don't have, it just have numbers at the bottom. The one that says page one, two and three, um. Oh, maybe, well, where would we put this, number, up under number three?
On the public records.
Can we put the last one, the city clerk timely maintains public disclosure on the website as required by law? I know that's one of her, is that anywhere, where we can put that at?
What, repeat that, Commissioner Cowan?
Okay, we're looking at this sheet, this one.
I'm sorry, repeat what you just said.
The city clerk timely maintains public disclosure on the website.
So public disclosure for what?
Huh?
Public disclosure for what?
Of like agendas, like what you normally do now, any announcements and calendars, all of that stuff, like you do now.
Okay.
And so that will go up under which one you said Bab?
Would it be record, I don't know, he's a record manager, I mean, I think uh, Mr. Jackson was found in a category for. A public records or record man.
What do you, what do you think it fits best, Ms. Clark?
Better to communications?
Communication.
Communication, what number that is, two?
That's number two.
Okay.
Number two.
Okay, so we just add it on the communication as a evaluation point.
Communications be number three now?
Yeah, it'll be number three now.
Three, would it change?
Question, this may be off the subject, but I'm thinking, I guess I've been reviewing the.
Mistaken.
Okay, I, there was a couple of days.
And all the minutes as well, Ms. Clark?
This is the three you have there.
So it says the um clerk is competent, is a competent municipal elections office official. The clerk has working understandings of Florida statutes, we're gonna put Palm Beach County's charter. And the city's charter as it relates to elections, and then the clerk assists appropriately from first contact with candidates until the end of the election cycle.
But can we add manage, it says you knowledgeable, but it doesn't say that you manage the elec- municipal elections, you see that part we're missing?
It says competent.
Potato, patato, but it's, it's already there, it's just what you agree to as a commission, if you wanna change the verdict.
Okay. Alright. And change Miami Day to Pahokee?
Right.
Pahokee's charter, I mean, not spending the money.
Are you trying to save paper? Or making me?
Oh, I'm gonna need some copies now. Well, I'm gonna need some copies to write on.
Just wanna ask for the folders back?
Huh?
She'll ask for the folders back and everything.
Are we, are we, um, suggest? Suggest that you use your technology a little bit more, cause we, we have conversation.
Write on, Mr. Jackson, I'm gonna be honest now.
I understand.
This computer gonna, we got a program where we can highlight and do all of that stuff?
It does all of that, but what, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is that, and it's a good example of what we're talking about now. You'll be surprised how much we spent on paper.
And folders.
And folders. You'll be surprised.
Well, give us a binder to put it in and we can use that same one binder all year long. We can use that same binder, don't give us, and we can hole punch it and put it in the binder and have it month after month.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what that mean, okay, in whatever ways you can cut costs, okay, got that, alright. Alright then, well, y'all better look at number eight, cause look what number eight says on that second one. It says board and committee agendas are provided to the applicant boards in ten days of the meeting, so.
Man, we've already addressed that.
Huh?
We've already addressed that.
So what do we say?
We talked about that for what, about thirty minutes?
I'm just saying it's on here, it's on, I'm just saying it's here on number eight.
We'll move that to timely manner, which already says up to the top, to strike the five.
But that say boys and committees, so you, so you striking out the five to ten days out?
So should we within timely manner?
Yes.
Huh? This is a consensus commission, are we leaving that? Cause it's talking about committees too.
Now, this is when they have in a meeting. Yeah, that's a little different.
Alright, I just.
Okay, so we got the.
Management of.
City manager and the city clerk evaluation to.
Wait.
I'm not gonna totally.
Number nine, we can delete, but she don't have anyone working with her, right? The management of employees, it's just her.
Yeah, sometime what we do is designate a, uh, assistant clerk in event that the regular clerk and we got to do that at some point. Have somebody that at least have the ability to assist with these meetings when we have them.
Well, we evaluate her, so she don't have nobody, so that's a little bit.
Yeah.
This goes back to what we were talking about earlier, cause I don't think the city is always gonna have just a one staff city clerk position.
I know, but we can evaluate, we just talking about evaluate her.
I'm talking about now, we can update that when we get someone, can't, this is, uh, for now.
Yeah, if it don't apply, you just don't address it at the same.
Yeah, just don't score.
We don't have to move it from the two. That way you just moving totally from the two, so next year say if we have someone.
You gotta.
And just assist with training or whoever the assistant, it won't even be there. So just, we just don't rate it, period.
Okay, so let me, this part, where it says the clerk offers appreciation to staff when warranted, so what does that mean now? Is that just dealing with money or?
No, that means just showing your gratitude to staff and you, or their job that they are doing. It's just more of a courtesy.
Okay, I'm just asking, just asking, Bab?
I know.
Doing clerk, doing clerk appreciation month.
Okay, I'm just, okay, I'm just asking. So then, let me ask a question, if she does get someone on page four of six. So that mean will she sustain or improve, I mean, will she, um, sustain or improve staff performance by evaluating the performance of staff members at least annually and setting goals with them and periodic, and periodically assessing their progress or will she not do that?
So you wanna move that one just out of there?
I'm just asking, I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Um, I believe it would be applicable.
Hmm?
If, yes, I believe, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we can add that over to number nine.
Which one, the old now that new now?
Then this be ten, it'll be the new ten, the old nine, it'll be the new ten. Okay, got that. She, on the physical management, do we have anything for her? Does she have to monitor and manage the physical activities of her department?
Yes.
Yes.
Does she have to, um, prepare a budget and give it to you during budget time?
Yes.
So can we add that to, cause that's up on the physical management on page four of six. Says prepare a budget and budgetary recommendations in an intelligent and accessible format. And it also says, um, a- appropriately monitors and manage physical activities of the department.
Which on last one?
On page four of six, under fiscal management.
Uh-huh.
If we can add the third one? No, not the third one, I'm sorry, the second one.
Second and fourth.
The second and fourth. And I'll send you these documents, um, Ms. Clark, I'll, I'll email them to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
As the second and fourth from page four of six, okay. I think that was it.
Okay.
I think that was, um.
It's, it's nine o'clock, I'm not saying stop, but if you wanna stop, but we got two areas, we can do it at some point. The goals for both the city manager and the city clerk.
Okay.
And again, I suggest we at least have one each of ourselves and allow them to have two goals, uh, for their, so there'll be a total of seven goals annually for the two staff.
Okay, can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
We can be done, in the back, I'm okay with the back of page eight on the one that, um.
I have to go, cause I think that is one of the things that's required by the contract, so that should come back in a resolution.
Okay, I mean, we gotta go back and forth.
City attorney, it wouldn't be a.
Operating, operating, um, consistent with the sunshine law.
And, and make sure my understanding you're right, attorney, so you basically say have a, a blank resolution to ask for us, but we gonna fill in the blanks when we bring everything?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you, Commissioner.
That we gonna have like a blank resolution, but we gonna fill in the blanks when everybody present at the meeting?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so it will be, these are the goals and we'll put, um, you know, seven lines or however many lines, these are, the goals shall be.
I, I have one question though, what if, uh, two of us come with the same goal? You know, we do it every.
You can deal with it as a mission.
Yeah, something like that, for example, yeah.
You can deal with it as a mission.
Yeah, something like that, for example, yeah.
And you'll discuss it like you would if you had any blank in anything that you were going to discuss this unfinished. So if you, if two people have the same one, you'll, you know, you'll, one, you'll, you know, you'll debate it, you'll discuss it and you'll come up with something different that's not duplicative. Or you may choose to have, instead of, you know, um, nine things, you maybe you choose to have seventeen. So it is, you'll, you'll talk about it at that, at that meeting, but it will be an agenda item, but it will be an agenda item.
In, in my. In my suggestion to the.